Okay, so for our business is to approve next few minutes, any questions or motions?
I'll move. Typically, we read it verbatim, but...
We're not gonna do this anymore, too. We can do that again.
Well, I'm just saying, if we're changing it, I mean, usually I wait until Christie reads it.
Then go ahead and do it.
Motion.
The Commissioner's Office is requesting the Board approve next few minutes for the meeting of January 12, 2015.
So move.
Second.
Commissioner O'Reilly?
Aye.
Mr. Spillier?
Aye.
Mr. Claypool?
Aye.
Anyway, do you have two subs, Brad?
Yes, I am out. The Commissioner's Office is requesting the Board approve next few minutes for the meeting of January 20th, 2015.
So move.
Second.
Commissioner O'Reilly?
Aye.
Mr. Spillier?
Aye.
Mr. Claypool?
Aye.
You ready for the next one?
I am.
The financials today include supplemental appropriations for the Engineers' Ditch and Stormwater Funds to appropriate the current balance. Guest transfer out of the general fund for fourth quarter 2014 portion of payroll fund for the Office of Community and Economic Development. Travel request for the Commission to Focus. There's carryover contracts, A and B for unsecured account for the Thompson Township sewer project for the Department of Water Resources. Total of $1,750,000. Those are carryovers from the previous year, but not in that one. Payment to Trumbull County Treasurer for the Colorado assessment of the 2015 11th District Cordial Field expenses in the amount of $40,343.09. First quarter 2015 payment in the OSG Extension Office in the amount of $68,566.25. And the payment to Portage Jowood County Juvenile Detention Center for the first quarter 2015 in the amount of $147,793.00.
Thank you. Any questions? Very good.
The Commissioner's Office is requesting the Board approve next few resolution number 15-00011, itemizing the financials for the meeting of January 27, 2015.
So move.
Second.
Commissioner O'Reilly?
Aye.
Mr. Spillier?
Aye.
Mr. Claypool?
Aye.
Thanks, Heidi.
Okay, I'm number four. Okay, that sounds good to me, and do you have an objection? Could we do 427? I do, because we have too many signs in the picture.
Well, then, go ahead and start. The county auditor is requesting the Board accept, execute and file monthly statement of county finances filed by the county auditor for the month of November 2014 pursuant to ORC 319.15. The county treasurer is requesting the Board accept, execute and file monthly statement of county finances filed by the county treasurer for the month of November 2014 pursuant to ORC 319.15. The county auditor is requesting the Board accept, execute and file the monthly statement of county finances filed by the county auditor for the month of December 2014 pursuant to ORC 319.15. The county treasurer is requesting the Board accept, execute and file the monthly statement of county finances filed by the county treasurer for the month of December 2014 pursuant to ORC 319.15.
I'll make those motions.
Second.
Commissioner O'Reilly?
Aye.
Mr. Spillier?
Aye.
Mr. Claypool?
Aye.
Okay, Building Department.
Hi, Mike.
Morning, Joe.
Morning.
Good morning, Matt, how are you?
Living the dream.
What you got?
Steve.
Oh, wait, sorry. Now, Kelly, unfortunately, I was trying to play through back. Going back to where he came from. Back to Richmond. Been a good employee while we had him, unfortunately. Only had him for about nine months, so... And so what's the outcome of that now? What are we gonna do? We're gonna backfill him? I guess the first part is to accept the resignation, and the second part is to request permission to advertise. Any questions, comments? Yes.
The Building Department is requesting the Board accept the resignation of James Urenkarr Multi-Certified Inspector to effective February 10, 2015. The Building Department is requesting the Board grant permission to advertise the position of Multi-Certified Inspector number 1103, this position will remain posted until...
I'll make those motions.
Second.
Commissioner?
Aye.
Mr. Spillier?
Aye.
Mr. Claypool?
Aye.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, Mike. Have a good day.
You do the same one.
Yes. One of these days, it's gonna be one.
Yeah.
Couple of months.
Take care.
Morning, Kelly.
Good morning.
Hi, Kelly.
Hi, how are you?
Good.
Personally, I appreciate the 9:00 AM sessions, and like that, you know, it's not another way.
Yeah.
Thank you for saying that.
My first item today is certification of the term of exemption for one of our projects for BF14, which is for the county home. This is a grant that was already signed and approved, and now we're just letting the state know that there is no environmental conditions that will be disturbed with these projects. And, because we're just doing an inside recap for the county home, so that would be...
Any trade-offs, comments on that?
Nope.
The Office of Community and Economic Development is requesting the Board three months authorize the President and the Board to execute the HAD development services agency certification of determination of subsequent exemption for a categorical exclusion project in regards to the Pleasant Hill County Home Project under grant number B-F-14-2A-B-1 in the amount of $25,538.
So move.
Second.
Commissioner O'Reilly?
Aye.
Mr. Spillier?
Aye.
Mr. Claypool?
Aye. Could you do me a favor? For the sake of the audience, I actually asked this question this morning, because it might be confusing. There's a comment in here about subsequent exemption for category exclusion project.
Basically, what it is saying is that we are not disturbing anything environmentally, and we need to let the state know that, and that's their terms that they use, category excluded. There's other categories. If we were doing something like disturbing ground, or heading us to building, changing something, that would be a different category, such as environmental assessment we would have to do. Or category excluded determination subject to this one code, which means we may be doing a little bit, but still doesn't mean to have environmental assessment. There's three different categories, and these are completely exempt.
So it's one of the pieces of red tape that we have to go through as we go through all these projects.
Exactly.
Just a step in the process.
Yeah, it's housekeeping.
Yeah, that's what it's...
Our favorite term.
That was a favorite term. David and I had a bet this morning when I called... Anita, thank you.
Oh, and did she say housekeeping?
Yeah, we did the first, like, 10 seconds, and then bingo, okay.
All right, sorry, go ahead.
Number 11, same deal, but this one is for the Burton Legion Hall project, and again, is exempt from any environmental assessment needed. This is also the BF14, our grant projects for this year.
The Office of Community and Economic Development is requesting the Board approve and authorize the President and the Board to execute the HAD Development Services Agency Certification of Determination of Subsequent Exemption for Categorical Exclusion Project in regards to the Burton Legion Hall projects under grant number B-F-14-1A-B-1 in the amount of $50,250.
So move.
Second.
Commissioner O'Reilly?
Aye.
Mr. Spillier?
Aye.
Mr. Claypool?
Aye.
Number 12 is the release of funds for... This is required by the state, so they can, again, look at the environmentals of all of the projects, we determined that we did our job, and no further environmental assessments need to be done. And this is allowing them to release the funds available to us to start making our projects. We can't go into contract with the architect, engineer, or anything until we get a release from the state. And this is for, the release of funds will be for all the projects, but this form, it saves the Thompson projects, because it wasn't environmental assessment done on the... Because we were doing a parking lot.
How does that project stand from a time standpoint?
Well, again, we need this before we can even go in on the community center part of it. If the sewer project is completely different, if that's what you're asking about.
Yeah, that's what I was asking about.
As far as I understand, that's not my project, that's Joni's project, but as far as I understand, it is moving along. I think the weather kind of played a role, and maybe slowed it down, but they are continuing to work on the plant, and getting ready. They have tied in some people, but, you know, the loaders are still sitting right now. Much as I know, water resources could be better when they ask how their project's going.
Okay, thanks.
The Office of Community and Economic Development is requesting the Board approve and authorize the President and the Board to execute the Stateable HAD Development Services Agency Officer Community Development Request for Relief of Funds, RROF, and Certification for Federally Funded State Projects in Regards to the Program INCO BF14 Grant Projects for the Thompson Township Community Center.
So move.
Second.
Commissioner O'Reilly?
Aye.
Mr. Spillier?
Aye.
Mr. Claypool?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks. The Honorable Joe?
Hi, Joe. How you doing?
I know I'm honorable, because I get that little card in the mail from the Secretary of State that said, "Honorable Skip Claypool," and wow, I'm honorable now. Okay, what do we got?
First item I have on here is that's from the Commissioners to enact the 33% reduction in the weight limits for the... It's the frost law, too, to protect the roads as the... Starts to warm up, and the frost is trying to get out of the ground, damage that could happen to the roads. We do it every year, this is typical, and soon as the frost is out of the road south, you guys have asked to put the road dangerous factor in.
You just said it. We do it every year. Why do we do this every year? Why don't we just have a resolution that says, the first of February until whatever date, and just...
Well, because the way the state law was set up, you actually determine those dates based on the weather that's going on. Last year, we extended, we started it later, because it got so cold and frosty.
Frozen.
So, you know, we keep an eye on it, and, you know, we try to limit that window, so we're not putting a burden on, you know, truck rooms and deliveries and equipments. But, yeah, protect the roads. So it's...
So it may move a week or two on either end.
Oh, absolutely. Just based on how cold it's been.
In the core, but the majority of the time is probably the same.
Pretty close, yeah, it's within a couple of weeks.
Just a couple of weeks on either, either the other.
Correct.
And how do you determine that? Is that a windage thing, or is that...
Actually, we kind of watch the roads, and we see the heave in them, and so forth, and we know what the town officials do. It has just a lot to do with it.
So it's a judgment thing? It's not like you stick a meter in the ground and say, oh, it's time to do the...
There's no way...
And they're all somewhat different depending on, you know, if they're built on a banked lead, and it's frosty, or the shade, and, you know, they're... Everybody's different.
I'm gonna put you on the spot for just a second. Somebody, you guys, if you've got any curiosity at all, Joe's got a phenomenal operation putting salt down on the road. He's got this very creative thing, so you gotta stop by his garage and try to bug him, and ask him to show you his garage and stuff.
Don't just wander in there, though.
You gotta sign an insurance waiver, but other than that...
Give him a call, arrange something, he's got really a good thing. Maybe give it to him.
Yeah.
It's really a pretty impressive operation that he's got set up out there. I mean, we're blessed to have an accounting engineer like Joe.
Excellent.
Anyway, go ahead. So we'll have a...
313.
The County Engineers' Office is requesting the Board approve the reduction by 33% to the maximum load limit permitted on all county and township roads to be effective February 16, 2015, in accordance with Section 5577.07 of the Ohio Revised Code. This reduction is necessary to minimize damage to the roads during periods of freeze thaw and excessive moisture.
So move.
Second.
Commissioner O'Reilly?
Aye.
Mr. Spillier?
Aye.
Mr. Claypool?
Aye.
Next item I have on here is asking the Commissioners to approve the Comedians' Assespy for the improvement of rapid roads. This will be from 422 up to the Burton Village line. It's pretty much just a resurfacing job with traffic maintained. We're not gonna close a road for any of that on this one, but it will be the following one. Pretty straightforward, it's about just over five miles, five and a half, five and a half miles resurfacing. Surface is really taken and beaten out there, especially in shaded areas down by pond road and so forth. It's right starting to do an M8, and we need to catch it now, because a lot more is about to begin.
And that was a recent fatality of that road.
Yeah, that was excessive speed.
Right, I realize that, but that road is not...
They tend to...
It's pretty straight when you get on it by 422, but then it starts going downhill when you get up closer to the burden there.
Right, and pavements tend to, especially a limestone surface like what's out there, tend to get a little polished five to seven years, and it's pushing about 10 years right now. Says that happens, they do get a little more slippery, and the surface we're putting down is the 424 we've talked about before, which is a high friction. So definitely make that situation better. There has been two more in that area since then.
Right, well, failed.
Accidents, no, not...
Accidents, right.
Excessive speed, but still, I mean, you know, we're gonna, you know, limit that even...
I guess my question is, has there been any thought given to maybe straightening some of those curves out, making them a little less...
We did years ago when we put the bridges in, that would have been around...
What year was that out?
96. 96. We redid the bridges, and we did as much as we could. Afterwards, all that property, there's a lot of small land in that.
Yeah, the base would be a nightmare.
Exactly, the base, the cost of it, and those were newer bridges, 96. You know, they got at least a 50-year life, so there's not much more we can change out there. The accident rate isn't high, we just had that...
Well, and there were other conditions involved, rain, and leaks all over the street, and so on, so far as I understand. But it's fun to drive through those curves pretty fast.
How do you know this?
I was told.
You've watched it. Up to the speed limit, yeah.
Up to the speed limit, but never exceeding, that's right.
But anyway, the surface we're putting on will certainly hold. The friction's a lot higher, and the coefficient will hold the car even more than normal.
So we can go faster around the corner?
No, you cannot.
Oh, okay.
You can travel more safely. When adverse conditions are out there, you'll be a little safer.
The County Engineers' Office is requesting the Board approve next week resolution number 15-012 to improve rapid road CH1 section D throughout Intrae and Burton Townships.
So move.
Second.
Commissioner O'Reilly?
Aye.
Mr. Spillier?
Aye.
Mr. Claypool?
It's impressive, the science, this is not just you guys out there throwing cement on the...
It's not doing it.
There's a lot to it. And even so, I mean, the whole asphalt industry's more than open years. There's a lot of chemical engineering involved, and two, the liquids, and the AC in the mix, depending on where you're at in the nation, or what you're trying, what kind of performance you're trying to get out of. Expensive stuff, so, you know, it's still a bit specific uses. Well, you got me razzled, though. You see all that technical stuff, and I believe Ben's in your sights.
Oh, really? Since you're at that.
All the tapes. We get some heat kits.
It's because it's you, Joe, was in the asphalt.
Oh, you wouldn't believe it at all.
All right.
Next item is rest and board to approve the plans and set bid dates for the salt storage building that we talked about here in the past. Set the bid opening at February 18, 2015, at 2:00 PM. We've been in receipt of the plan since last Thursday. We're just gonna send it out to bid. Any corrections, comments?
Well, I know you and I've talked about this, and it's a unique style of building, that... Certain, the manufacturers also install, right, or they have...
Yeah.
I mean, I guess what I'm asking is, how many legitimate bids do you think you're gonna get from these people that are...
I'm hoping we'll get at least three.
That's what I was gonna say, there's three major companies, aren't there?
There is, and what we've also done is, we've specified what we want, but also set parameters, that if you need these parameters, we'll entertain bids from different type structures, if it can accommodate the amount of storage we need. So, you know, we try our best to get, meet our needs, and have it last for the amount of time it has to. But with the same respect, we do our best to not make it proprietary, in that other people can bid it with their product. And we'll evaluate that, and if something, someone puts in a bid that is somewhat different from our design, we've required them to stamp, have professional engineers stamp the drawings. Because what we've given them, we have stamped, we're licensed engineers, and we know what we're working everything. So if they do a variation of it, we'll allow it, but they have to stamp it, submit it, and then at that point, we'll evaluate the lowest and best that's submitted. So, yeah, it's open to anybody and everything, but we've kind of given a direction that we would like to see them do.
Will you indicate alternate materials, I mean, instead of the fabric? Like a steel top, or a...
No, we've required that, yeah, we're talking the foundation.
The foundation.
You know, some of the different manufacturers have different trust systems. More of a steel superstructure than this particular one. These are lighter trusses, but very economical.
But the John Key public, it's gonna look the same.
Right, right. And, you know, when you talk about other people bidding, the top itself that we've asked for is a particular brand, and they can go with an alternate. But even so, concrete companies, most of the money's in the foundation and the wall. So we could have four, five, six, seven concrete companies bid on this, and then they can hire the people for the superstructure as a sub. So, I mean, we could have 10, 15 bids, you know, but it's only the top that, you know, is somewhat limited. So, yeah, we've done our best to not make it proprietary.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions?
The County Engineers' Office is requesting the Board approve the plans and specifications for the construction of a salt storage structure to be located at 12665 Barrett Road, Flareton Township. The Engineers' Highway Maintenance Department and further grant permission to advertise the bids with the opening to be held on Wednesday, February 18, 2015, at 2:00 PM. Notice that this bid opening will be advertised on January 29, 2015, and on the county website.
So move.
Second.
Commissioner O'Reilly?
Aye.
Mr. Spillier?
Aye.
Mr. Claypool?
Aye.
Thanks, Joe.
Jobs and Family Services. You're in the hot seat.
Good morning, your honor.
Craig, good morning.
I have to feel like I'm still in court, so I have to still use some terms that are more similar. So, we're here, well, first of all, do you all know Nancy? I just wanted to make sure.
Nice to see everybody again.
Obviously, she's the head of our Family First Council. We're here approximately every six months to go over the mutual funding agreement for our Family First Council. I know it's somewhat, you know, newer for, you know, some of you to, you know, go over what we do, but it is a... Just so you guys understand, and you may already know, so I'm sorry for repeating myself, but it is a commission or a council that's required by statute for you guys to create and implement, and there are certain mandated members. If you want to take a look at the statute, it's the Ohio안 Code 12137. But it's required for you, there's 88 family first councils throughout Ohio, so...
Every county.
Every county has one. And ours is really a, what I would view as either a cutting edge or an example of how these councils should be run. It's really a collaborative effort through, you know, many partners and five partners in our county, and it's been around for 20 years, and it's really sort of a cost. It really saves the county of a lot of headaches, and it helps allocate costs across the board, so it's not just JFS that is having our monies used for every child that's in a very complicated placement. So with that being said, I'm sure you have the agreement before you, it's been signed by all the relevant parties other, and you guys are usually the last to approve this and execute this. And we would just ask that you go forward and execute this. We are, this is a little later in the timeline that we would normally want to be in, so luckily, the Family First Council's been pretty careful with its monies, but it's running out of money. And we have approximately 10 children as of now that are in placements that are being funded by this, the council. And some of these placements are foreseeable beyond just next month. But it's from job and family services aspect, it's an incredibly important partner with what we do, and really helps children that are in need, so we would just ask. And we're the fiscal agent for this council, the largest contributor, so we've just very much asked the Commissioners to support us and execute this contract going forward. And we're here to ask and answer any questions available.
Being the representative to that council for the last year and a half or so long, and... It's, the work they do is phenomenal. Unfortunately, they have to do this work for some of these cases, which are... I'll use the word tragic. They're certainly disheartening to go in and see here some of the hardships that these kids are, through no fault of their own, are involved with, and... You know, I think they do great work, sitting there, and many of these issues, most of these issues are confidential, so you can't... I don't even know their names, it's just Child X and Child Y and...
And you hear the stories.
One and two, and you hear the story, and it can be very disturbing, or at least it is to me.
Just as an example, we just had a very recent story, and I'll keep it confidential, but just to give an example of how we save the county money. We have a lot of the children that we're dealing with are not necessarily court involved, and so sometimes for JFS stuff with the bill, we need custody, actual custody of a child, and we, the county's taxpayer dollars go towards these placements. Some of these children that are troubled actually have very good parents that are doing everything that they can to step up for their child, it's just they, there's services that they need. And so we had a recent case where we had two parents that actually carried very good insurance, and we had to place this child at Belfair, which is in their ITU, which is approximately $500 a day. And so with this, their insurance covered 80% of that cost, which is a great cost savings to us. If JFS had custody of this child, we'd pay that $500 a day for that. These parents had insurance, and they covered it, so custody remained with the parents, and Family First Council stepped up and covered that extra just 20%. But, so they're paying $100 versus if we had custody, we'd be paying $500 a day. And so that's an example of how that collaboration works, and it gets sort of allocated across the board to these multiple, including you guys, thankfully, stepped up and helped us. And so that's how it sort of can work uniquely, and you can get that child and meet that child's needs, but not at such an expense where, you know, it's a very heady way of dealing with some of these issues. So, and we operate in a field of gray, as you guys may well know, and we try to fill in these cracks in the community where, you know, it's needed. And that's just one example out of hundreds that we've done where it's worked, and we save the county and we serve the client.
Anything else?
The Department of Job and Family Services is requesting the Board approve and execute the Jowood County Family First Council mutual funding agreement between the Jowood County Board of Commissioners, the Jowood County Job and Family Services, Jowood County Board of Developmental Facilities, the Jowood County Board of Mental Health and Recovery Services, and the Jowood County Judicial Court for funding of the Jowood County Family First Council for the period January 1, 2015 through June 30, 2015. This agreement commits the Board of County Commissioners to providing a support payment of $20,434 from the general fund.
So move.
Second.
Commissioner Veer?
Aye.
Commissioner Spudler?
Aye.
Commissioner Claypool?
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for your continued support, we really appreciate it.
Really appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Are you doing the next?
Yeah, I'll do the next one. The Commissioners partnered with Cutter Exploration a number of years ago to do some gas wells on county property, and starting out in Chester, and we're going to see revenues from that, and the Board asked Cutter to consider putting a well on the fairgrounds to help support the fairgrounds from the revenue from that gas well. And Cutter generously did that, and so by this process, we take the money that's collected every year, well, it was collected in fourteen, and we turn around, provide that to the Fair Board to help them support the fair. So this action just allows for that transfer.
Comments, questions?
The Commissioners's Office is requesting the Board approve and progress on the expenditure to the Jog County Agricultural Society pursuant to ORC 1711.15 and 1711.16 for the year 2014 in the amount of $2,790.35, which is the total gas well revenue received by the county through December 31st, 2014, from a well located on the Jog County Fairgrounds property.
So move.
Second.
Commissioner Veer?
Aye.
Commissioner Spudler?
Aye.
Commissioner Claypool?
Aye.
Good morning. This is more for house cleaning.
It's the second time this morning.
I know, I'm gonna go down.
Between you and C C.
I'm gonna be going down and cleaning the record center when I'm down here, so this afternoon. I'm here because of the requirement that the Commissioners approve the organizational charts for the departments under your hiring authority, and what we had been doing for some of them was including the name of the person who holds that, that position, and what that would mean is every time somebody quits, we would have to reapprove the org chart, which seemed kind of not the best use of your time. So what I did was, and, and to make it consistent, I, I went through some of the org charts and took, just took the names off. So the positions are the same, the flow of authority is the same, the position numbers are the same, we just took off the names. And of course, if the department heads want to use org charts and put names in there, certainly welcome to do it, but for your purposes and mine, it didn't make sense to have the names on the actual org charts. That's it.
Any issue? Okay, go ahead.
Commissioners's Office is requesting the Board approve the revised organizational charts for the departments, including Archives Building, County Home, Department of Emergency Services, and Jog Ward, and that removes specific employee names and salary rates.
So move.
Second.
Commissioner Veer?
Aye.
Commissioner Spudler?
Aye.
Commissioner Claypool?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Is that Harley Davidson?
I was just looking.
Certainly is, yeah, we're not riding today, though. Okay, so I'm here this morning to talk about the wellness SEPCO grant, and every year, well, for the past three years, they have, SEPCO, our healthcare consortium, has offered wellness grant dollars for all of the counties in the consortium, and we have thirty-two counties now. So this year, they've offered Jog County $13,368 to be used for various promotions for health and wellness, and I prepared the grant, which I think you all probably saw, hopefully, and I'm here today to ask for your approval to accept that money.
Question, comment? Well, I'll, I'll make a brief comment for anybody, and we had some folks come up from Columbus and talk at length about this. If anybody knows me, I'm not really in favor of this wellness grant, but after quite a bit of time, a lot of discussion, I'm, I'm gonna support it today. I think the evidence, right now industry-wide, is showing that wellness dollars like this don't really provide a payback, at least that's the feedback that I'm getting, and so, but I want to support the county, and this money is apparently going to waste if we didn't take it, so I will support it at this point. But I want to go on record with that, with that comment.
The Commissioners's Office is requesting the Board approve the 2015 SEPCO Health and Wellness Grant in the amount of $13,368 to most employee healthy women like us.
So move.
Second.
Commissioner Veer?
Aye.
Commissioner Spudler?
Aye.
Commissioner Claypool?
Aye. Okay.
The Commissioners's Office is requesting the Board cancel session for Tuesday, February 10th, 2015, due to Commissioners training in Congress.
So move.
Second.
Commissioner Veer?
Aye.
Commissioner Spudler?
Aye.
Commissioner Claypool?
Aye.
See this one? Just working up and over.
You slipped to another page or something.
Pick up on the, all right, number one on there. So apparently we're gonna move into executive session to discuss some litigation issue, and we'll be back.
Susan, Susan Wheel, Assistant Prosecutor, will be coming in.
Is she here yet?
She's here.
Craig Swenson.
So Commissioners's Office is requesting the Board move into executive session for the purpose of discussing the litigation.
So move.
Second.
Commissioner Veer?
Aye.
Commissioner Spudler?
Aye.
Commissioner Claypool?
Aye.
It's gonna be David, Commissioners, Susan, Craig.
Do you anticipate any action?
I'd like to have Linda come in as well.
Uh, no, I don't, I don't, there could be, but I don't. I'd like to have Linda in there as well.
Okay, sorry.
Okay, that was fun.
Okay, any comments, questions?
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
Oh, sorry.
Let the record show, we entered back into public session at 10:10.
No action being taken.
No action taken.
Thank you. Okay, you ready?
Yes, sir.
All right. Did Blake and Ralph, did you get this document from Dave, the board of ten appointments, criticality, and so on and so forth? So the next one, really, that's, from a priority standpoint, is Jog County Family Services, and I was gonna ask to meet with Craig, following this meeting, and start a process, we're gonna identify a go-forward process, and that's where we get that wrapped up, and then I think one of the next ones we can push forward on would be the Planning Committee.
We've gotten a number of...
So, I don't know if you had any comments or questions on me, so.
Well, on the Planning Commission, I mean, are these open-ended, or did we have a, a...
Deadline?
A deadline date set for these? Because on the planning, we have four?
Well, we have applications. I think the concern was that a broad spectrum of citizens be aware of these openings, I think that was what I heard at the last meeting.
The, the, the timing on all of this is up to us to set, and I think per Dave's comment, and I suggested this to Dave this morning, why don't we go and put public notice, at least in the short run, you know, there's probably a long-term solution to these kinds of things, but in the short run, put public notice in the Maple Leaf, put it on our website, give it a month, and then, and then wrap it up. And if you guys are amenable to that, then that's what I suggest relative to at least the county planning, well, and all of, most of them. I guess the Jog Family Services might be an exception to that, so.
Yeah, most of these other ones, there's already a quorum, so they can operate. The, these Family Services Planning Committee is the one where everybody currently on the Board is up, and they want to have a meeting here within the next month, so that's kind of moving forward.
You, you had given us a document which I don't have committed to memory, where some of these people, their terms expire, they're staggered, some are March, May, June, whatever...
And this reflects it right here.
Yeah, okay, so what we're saying is the Jog, the, the Planning Committee for J, for, yeah, Family Services, they all went off on December 31st.
Yeah, it's a one-year term, whereas most of these are multi-year terms, and only some of the people are expiring.
Yeah, it doesn't seem like, that there's a rush to appoint someone, or reappoint someone to a term that's gonna expire in July, right now.
And ones like the NACOD, I'm actually exploring with Dave right now whether we even need to be a member of that, if there's another way to handle that, in terms of...
I think that'd be one of the things you want to talk with, with Craig about as well.
Yeah, I think we're gonna lose a ton of money there, but that's...
Well, that's the, the discussion. Is it where we lose money? It can be redirected directly to Jog Family Services, so we need, I want to explore that a little bit, if we're gonna lose money, then it enters into the calculation quite a bit, so I mean, it's...
We may get the same amount of money, but we're gonna lose the network that we have with all the other counties that, that helps provide additional services to, to us and to our, the people. I mean, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to have our own people that look into different things, whereas when we have a consortium of three counties, we have the person, but that expense is shared by three entities.
Well, that's what I need to understand more of, and I can, I'll get with Craig.
Yeah, I'm not an expert on this, but...
I've got time to you in private, but...
I'm pretty sure...
I'm not gonna waste everybody's time here with Ralph. Let me do a little homework on my own, and we can come back into a discussion, but are, are we, can we get agreement on the fact that we can put public notice in for some of these boards and then move this thing forward, or?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we...
Ralph, what do you think about that? Is that okay with you? All right, so let's just plan to put, do we need a resolution to do that?
No.
No, okay, so let's just plan to put a public notice on for the Planning Commission, for the Law Library, and we, you and I talked this morning about Western Reserve in terms of whether that's even necessary?
Well, yeah, 'cause that's a joint appointment with Soil and Water, and we haven't, the Board hasn't paid dues into that organization, that we were, we were incorporated, we, the Commissioners joined this, I guess, in 1989, and we've never, to my knowledge, paid our dues, so it might be a member, a matter of the Board considering formally withdrawing from that group, and then that would become an appointment. If Soil and Water chooses to be a member, it would be Soil and Water's appointment, and you, you guys would have anything to do with it.
And what's the formality on withdrawing from that?
We have to check with prosecutor about what we have to do, I think we can add a letter of action.
Since we've never paid for it, they haven't sent us a, "Dear John."
You would think, but no.
Yeah, we need to clean some of that up, and so once you check into that, we'll see what we can do with it. So with that said, let's just go ahead and do that, and we'll, we'll get these boards wrapped up then shortly, within a month. Okay, and any comments from the folks in the other?
Is this public, public access?
It's public time of view.
Mike Petrasol, Chester, and so Steve.
Okay, great.
I guess my, my question is to the Board is, what happened with our NOACA appointments? Why don't we have our county engineer on the Board for NOACA? Who's the, the road guy for the county, he knows what all our road needs are, and he gets, I think, I think the public should give an explanation of why we appointed a two-time voted-out person to that position.
To an alternate position.
Well, on that board, as an alternate. Clearly, when the people voted her out twice, I think that, that the public needs an explanation why we put her back on.
We didn't put her back on, I did.
Okay?
Okay? Because at the time, she's the most experienced, and she's a resident of the county.
More experienced than the engineer?
More experienced at NOACA.
More experienced than the engineer.
Okay, if you use, you can use that word. Last year, I appointed...
Who cares about NOACA?
Excuse me, excuse me, sir, I'm talking.
All right, apologize.
Okay, I, you asked a question, I'm answering it. I appointed the engineer last year. He was my alternate. He went to three meetings in the entire year, he went to three meetings, and the, one meeting I went to because he couldn't make it, seven meetings, we had to take action and, and pass a resolution to send that, I, help me out here, engineer Shane.
Deputy engineer.
Deputy engineer, thank you. We had to send a deputy engineer seven times, and three times, no one went because we didn't get notification from my, our engineer, that he couldn't make it in time that we could pass a resolution, so we didn't have anybody to go there, and I had other commitments. So while the engineer, I consider a friend of mine, having him not there isn't a asset, just having him on paper as the, as the alternate is, is not an asset. Mary Simeedia, now if I go, she does, she sits at home, but she had, of the people available to me, she picked at that time, she had the most experience, and she lives, she's a Jogga County resident, and if we're gonna talk about Jogga County issues, I think we need to have Jogga County people. We hear that enough that the argument with NOACA is, we don't want people in those four counties making decisions for us. Well, okay, if that's the rules by which we run a play, then we need to have somebody in our county making decisions for us, that's it. That's why I did it, and that's the end of the conversation.
We can go on with the acknowledgements if you want.
Well, I have a comment on that. I'm, I'm looking for... First of all, from a overall county engineer perspective, just so everybody's, no, Mike, you haven't been attending our meetings, we did put a resolution forward to NOACA requesting as the minimum standard in NOACA that our county engineer and the three Commissioners be included, and that was submitted, on Friday they considered it, they put it into the system, we need to ask them for a correction because they use that as a replacement for the other resolution that's been in the works for a year, in which two Commissioners, we get to choose who sits in a seat, and so...
No, that's not true.
And so, yes, it is true.
No, it's not true.
And so, so we have two Commissioners, and then we would have a county engineer in position, so, but NOACA chose to replace that particular resolution with a new resolution, and we can discuss whether or not we want to do that, or make a request that they consider both, and the one's been in, in the works for a year.
To correct my, to correct my colleague, that is, what he just said is not true. Each Commissioner here has a term, one of us starts on the first, one of us starts on the second, and one of us starts on the third of January. The rotation during the two Commissioner proposal, assigned Commissioners, not by name, because that would change, but by date of, the date we start our job. The proposal was for two Commissioners, and, and it's better if you diagram it, which we can't do, but two Commissioners sit here, and on the same level is the engineer. The engineer, his alternate, he picks from his staff. The two Engineer, the two Commissioners that are here, the third Commissioner that's in the idle, I'll use the word idle position, is automatically the alternate for one of the Commissioners if they don't make it. It rotates arounds. The argument posed by you and Ralph last year was that it should be someone who is in elected office or the elected officer picked, so the proposal that was sent down there last year ensured that there would always be that scenario. You were the litmus test because you were not an elected officer, you were not a county employee, that was the other consideration, it had to be a county employee. That went down, it got shot down or never acted on, you went to the meetings, I don't, I believe it wasn't acted on, but it was not, you get to pick the Commissioners, the, you can pick the rotation, but then it's set going forward by the date that we take office. I got the, but the paperwork.
It, it's not worth the discussion.
Well, I'm just, I don't want it...
The, the bottom line is you get two Commissioners and an engineer in the, in the past resolution, but, but let me make this point real quick, and I attended the Friday meeting, as did Kim, Lori, in the place of Ross Fittler as his alternate, and here's what I observed, and by the way, my alternate happens to be Linda Brehne, who is a Lake County resident, but who is also a ten-year employee...
who is also a ten-year employee of this county. Served this account, this county with distinction. She does a fantastic job. She probably knows as much about this county and has as much interest in protecting this county or upholding this county's values and principles as anybody that I know. I'm very comfortable with Linda. And she has served as an alternate for multiple Commissioners sitting at this table well before me, Tracy Jamison and others. And so she's a lot of experience. When I have somebody sitting at that table, and by the way, with all due respect to Linda, it's not likely she'll be there much because I attend all the meetings. But on some happenstance, if, if I should have broken a leg or whatever, then Linda will be going there, and I'll be very comfortable with that because she adheres to the values and principles that I would take to that Board. She knows how I think. She knows what it is that I would say. She represents me at that table. Here's what I saw on the part of Mary Sumidi, who is a lifelong, or not a lifelong, but a very long-duration resident of Jogga County. She voted to raise your taxes, or to support raising your taxes in Friday's meeting. She voted to undermine the county, or the, the state constitutional law that says we're gonna use road tax dollars only for roads. That's what the, the people signed up for. That's what the promise was to people when the constitutional, when the 28 cents a gallon was established to take care of our roads. It was a promise, we're gonna take care of the roads. She voted to lobby against that to change the Constitution to allow those dollars to now be used for mass transit and to be used for bicycle trails, other things, therefore diluting the money that goes into our roads. She voted for a regional plan, which I would love to show you. We're not gonna get into a lot of details behind that regional plan, which Kim and I both voted opposed on Friday, that would undermine Jogga County, Jogga County's future, because it involves transferring our dollars under the guise of cost-sharing to Cleveland. So the question that I have is who best represents Jogga County? Somebody who is supporting Noacka's objectives of all about Cleveland, Cuyahoga County, using our tax dollars to support their programs, and so on and so forth. This whole regional concept of, of, you know, unification across the region, or somebody whose best interest is Jogga County and protecting Jogga County citizens and tax dollars. And so I've got real concerns over Ms. Sumidi, who was voted out of office twice, for the very reasons that I stipulated. And so I've, I've got concerns about that. Now, Ralph, or Blake has a right to pick the person that he picks. And so, and...
I would like you to clarify something that you just stated there. You talked about the piece of legislation that mentioned bike paths. Because bike paths is, is a buzzword. Is that not the multimodal piece that would also include money for Amish buggy lanes?
No, no, we're...
I believe it is, but that's all right.
You're not talking about the same thing?
No, well, okay, we may not be talking about the same thing, but you didn't make it clear. But I know that we are in favor of modifying rules there to include something that would affect Jogga County, which is, whether it's a widening of the street, most probably, like on 528, and providing a buggy lane over on the side so that we can hopefully eliminate the semi-annual occurrence of car buggy crashes and so on. And I'm sure, like it is with every other law in the world, things get tacked on. The, the, the point of the issue is, you can say all you want, you can pick your person, he can pick his person, I pick my person, and that's the end of the discussion. I mean, we can sit here and, and just hash it out all day, or we can continue this adjourn, or I can just leave.
So I mean, that's all your call on what you do. But I mean, it is important for folks to know who's representative in Noacka. And the constitutional resolution that was passed on Friday, and since Kim was there, she can throw in her two cents worth in, to make sure that my understanding of that is correct, that is aside from, we have, we have a, the 18 cents a ga, a gallon federal tax, which is governed by MAP 21. That law already has a set aside for alternative forms of transportation, bicycle trails, buggy trails, so on and so forth. Right now, it's all been dedicated towards bicycle trails and mass transit. What was proposed on Friday was actually changing the Ohio Constitution, which now specifically allocates dollars. That's what we agreed to. That's the promise that our lawmakers made to us. They were gonna allocate the 28 cents a gallon just to roads. And I would be comfortable with that. If now you want to put money into other things, then that should be taken to the voters and not, not lobbying to, to have this constitutional change based on some misguided, you know, information that, in, in conjunction with that, and people just need to know this, because you need to know this organization that is, that is influencing or wanting to change our county. They actually, in the meeting minutes, are now seeking the opportunity to hire lobbyists and are, using our tax dollars to lobby for these tax increases and these other programs. And Mary's in support of that. I'm not in support of that. You need to decide who you want representing you in Noacka, because you have influence over people on this Board. I know that if you were not happy with my representative, I would probably reconsider that assignment because I think you're important. And so I have my say there, I guess. Anybody else have any comments on that? Go ahead, Tom.
I would like to know Ralph's opinion. I've been seeing Ralph sitting here very quietly, listening, and I'd like to know what he thinks about this.
I, I would say that I, I, I pretty much go along with what Skip is saying.
Okay.
Go ahead, Mike.
Mike Petrosal again. Is there any, is there any initiative or desire to figure out a way to get out of Noacka? Somebody working on a plan to get us out and let our representatives in, our representatives down in DC get this federal tax dollars back for us? Has there been any movement or discussions with our State Rep?
There's a lot of, at least from my perspective, I can't speak for Mr. Reer and Mr. Bittler. From my perspective, there's, I'm doing some homework right now. We're doing some discussion. Noacka has put out a statement with four, I think it's four, different options for us to leave Noacka. We never asked them for that, but they put it together for a variety of reasons. And so we have alternatives, and we have to consider our best strategy going forward that's gonna serve the best interest of Jogga County. Our best interest may be served remaining in Noacka, even though it's a painful experience, because that bureaucratic organization is not favorable toward counties like Jogga County. It's not just Jogga County. They're not favorable to any rural counties. It's all about the urban core and the urban area for the people that sit at that Board who have the majority vote. And so with that said, there's a lot of things being in the consideration right now, a lot of discussions going on. I'm going down to meet with ODOT in a week or two. I've reached out to our State Representative. I'm gonna reach out to Mr. Joyce and talk to him about it. He sits on the Transportation Committee. I would suggest that everyone in this room reach out to Mr. Joyce and say, you know, you need to be looking out for your constituents and not from a regional perspective. One, and if you talk to Joe Cattell, he will share this with you. Right now, there's a consideration to increase our federal gas tax, and that's what the MPOs would like, because they can control this big pot of money now that they would receive. But in our best interest, from the State's best interest, from the citizen's best interest, in my opinion, it's better to consider local dollars, not federal dollars, because we have more control over that. We lose, less leak away if you have local. And you get to identify what the sorts of problem is, how much money is needed. They get this big pie of dollars at the federal level so they can distribute that all around and do, you know, wealth sharing and all that kind of nonsense. Instead of solving the problem at hand, what is our shortfall? How many roads do we need to take care of? What's the cost of that? If we want buggy trails, what's the cost of that? And then we can face that particular financial situation. Even at a state level, it's more easily controlled, and it's not controlled by the federal government. If you raise this up to the federal government, now you got big issues, because you can't control that. The bureaucratic organization we've got in Noacka is completely, we have zero input influence in there. We can shout, we can pound on the table, we can do whatever we want to do. They are gonna do what they think is in their best interest. And when I say they, I'm talking about Cleveland, Cuyahoga County, you know, the large metropolitan areas. They just look at us as a, as a funding source.
What I understand is, I mean, we elect county, they, they elect, they're a regional organization. They don't have three Commissioners. They have County Executives, and he's appointed as four. So, I mean, I don't understand why Jogga's even in it anymore, so, but...
Michael, since I've been here, including last year when Mary Sumidi was here, we instructed Mr. Claypool, if you can figure out a way to get us out of there and keep our highway dollars, our bridge money, road and bridge money, which is a number that's fluid. It's between, I'm gonna say round figures, between two, two and a half, maybe it touches three million, but very rarely. And he was instructed, you find us a way to get our road money, and we'll leave. I'm not married to the organization. I, most, 90% of what they do, I, I oppose. Probably 95% of what they do. But I am opposed to coming to you on Election Day and asking you for additional tax dollars to make up the difference for the $2 million or to that fluid number that we're gonna lose for roads and bridges, since we're already paying it through gas tax and other, we're not gonna get a refund.
What's the purpose of us having a Congressman that's not gonna lobby to get our tax money back?
Well, we can't solve that from the Commissioners' chambers, I'm sorry.
Well, I think that, I think pressure can be, pressure can be put on the Congressman to make him go after those things. I think there's, there's gotta be a way to do that.
Yeah, you write letters and all your supporters...
I do write letters all the time.
No, I'm saying that's the pressure. Three of us writing letters to, to David Joyce or whomever is, it, it, it's a component. It's a fraction, a part of the total issue. But there's more power in, in, in the numbers, the volume of people that write these letters, than who writes the letter. I mean, we, we've sent, I don't know if, I don't believe we sent a resolution to David Joyce. I know we've sent resolutions, Ralph was here. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not sure. I know we sent a resolution to Noacka about their participation in Neosac and Gen 21 and all that crap that was included in that resolution. We, we, I'm not sure if we did one to, to David Joyce. I'd be all, oh, that's fine with me, write one up, and we'll send it down there to him.
Well, and with all due respect, Blake, if you're in a, and we're in a, we appear to be agreement on Noacka, and by the way, we are working, I'm still working. This, this Noacka thing is just a sticky federal animal. I mean, there is no simple solution to this for a whole variety of reasons. And I'll, I'd love to share with you some of what I learned, but I don't know if I want to make that public yet. But with that said, and again, with all due respect, Blake, I mean, you have a right to do what you do, and I, I'm a bit challenged because we would be better served, the people of this county would be better served, with Joe Cattell as your alternate, rather than Ms. Sumidi, who clearly, and I can show you all kinds of evidence, is undermining the, the best interest of Jogga County with some of this stuff.
Why, why are you attacking me over that?
I'm not attacking you.
When, when the man between us had every opportunity, it ain't Joe Cattell, because he picked last, and chose an out-of-county resident. Now, I believe I have ideas in my mind, which I won't share, why that took place. But clearly, if it was that important, the last guy picking could have corrected that.
Yeah, that's, you missed the point.
No, I didn't miss the point.
The link is, we have a, a person who was voted out of office twice.
And a person that was never voted into office, so, and doesn't live in the community. So right now, we need to stop the argument, or, or it's gonna deteriorate even more.
Thank you for your time, Commissioners.
You're welcome.
Thank you for your participation.
Now, Bob Lasko and Esther, I speak for Esther and I, and I don't know if anybody else in here wanna raise their hand. We'd like to see us out of Noacka. Period. And I would, thank you. You can see the reaction here. This is... Could you please get microphones for the table and for your guests? We cannot understand or hear anything that is said by your guests, ever. And when you are speaking up there, we miss a lot, because we don't hear what you are saying.
Sure.
You need microphones. Please get some...
We have talked about that in the past. I don't know what the holdup is.
I think it's, I think it's a good idea. Bob, before you leave today, once you meet me back in my office, I'm gonna talk to you a little bit about Noacka and leaving Noacka. And so I can share some things with you that will be, that'll help your understanding of where we are on that kind of stuff. Any other comments or questions? No? With that said, let me read the acknowledgement, or the, the meetings and stuff coming up? Or acknowledgements first? Or do you want to do that? Why don't you go ahead and make the acknowledgement? You read better than me.
The 2014 annual inventory of all materials, machinery, tools, and other county supplies pursuant to ORC 305.18 for filing. The permanent aging Board of Elections building, asset county development, county home, department, emergency services, county year, maintenance, mental health, training, juvenile, probate court, prosecutor reporter, soil and water drainage, and water resources. A monthly report filed by the county chair and spot that is a count of expenses for the inmate meals for the month ending December 2014. The monthly inventory report consolidated investment portfolio and obligations and securities monthly reports filed by the legislature's office for Jogga County for the month of December 2014 pursuant to ORC 135.35L.
Okay. On the 29th, the meeting's gonna hold regular, a regular session. It's this Thursday at 6:30. On Friday, there's a Noacka Subcommittee meeting for air quality, transportation, and water quality. On the 3rd of February, the Commission's gonna hold a regular session at 9 o'clock. NEO Consortium, COG, there's gonna be, that meeting's on February 4th at 1:30 in Building 8. By the way, we are looking to update our website to include all this stuff on our website, so it'll be easier for you to keep track of this stuff. On, on February 8th through the 10th, the Commissioners are gonna be in training in Columbus, how to be Commissioners. The 9th, isn't that good? About time. There's gonna be a Board of Revision meeting at 9 o'clock in the Auditor's Meeting. The 10th, the Commissioners are gonna hold a regular session.
That you just canceled.
That we just canceled. The 10th, the Commissioners are also gonna, oh, there's also a Planning Commission meeting in Building Number, or across the street here at 470. Noacka meeting, planning and programming, the 12th, External Affairs meeting on the 13th, that's Noacka, Leadership Jogga County Government Day, Jogga Government Day luncheon at Mary's Party Center. A lot of meetings coming up.
St. Mary's Party Center.
That's it. Oh, sorry. Thank you. The county offices will be closed for general business due to President's Day on the 16th. Commissioners are gonna hold a regular session on the 17th. Noacka Transit Council, Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory, I know you guys are gonna be excited about that one, on the 20th. Family First Council on the 23rd at the Mental Health Office. And the 24th, the Commissioners are gonna hold a regular session. The 26th, the Commissioners hold a regular session. And on the 27th, Noacka has a Finance Audit Governance and Executive.
Adjourn.
So with that said?
Thank you for coming.